Thank you, everyone, for joining us. As always, no decisions are made while we were in executive session. The next item on the agenda is Finance and Utilities Committee Report. Chairman Gazwell?
Yeah, first, we'll start off with the presentation on the independent auditor's report for the fiscal year of 2022, '23.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the Bonnet Deal Group. We are the college's auditors, and we have completed our audit of the college's financial statements for the year ended August 31st, 2023. We sent the reports to Donna previously. I believe that they've been distributed electronically to the board. For this evening's presentation, I prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation of the overall results of the audit. So our scope of services, what we provide to audit, we audit the college's financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards, and in conjunction with that, we also perform a uniform guidance audit because the college expends in excess of $750,000 of federal aid. A brief summary of the overall results of the audit. We issued an unmodified opinion on the college's financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial statements. If you don't have a chance to read the entire report, I think it's 80 pages or so. If you can't read all of it, do try to read at least the management's discussion analysis piece. It gives a good overview of what happened during the year and is comparative to the prior year, and it's written in somewhat layman's terms. We had no internal control findings or compliance findings with regard to your financial reporting. There was one finding, which we'll talk about, with regard to federal programs. And a big thank you to Donna and the rest of the staff for helping us get through the audit. An audit is a collaborative effort. We can't audit what isn't provided to us, so thank you very much. The next slide, required communications. During the year, the college adopted GASB '96. GASB is the governmental accounting standards board that sets the accounting standards that all governments need to follow. So GASB '96 needed to be adopted this year, which is subscription-based information technology agreements. So we had to capitalize some of the software that you lease is basically what happened there. Accounting estimates, you think of financial statements as numbers, you think of numbers as exact. It's not entirely true. There are some significant estimates in your financial statements, the most significant being compensated absences, depreciable lives of capital assets, other post-employment benefits, and then net pension, asset liabilities that passes through from New York State TRS and ERS. Our role as your auditors is to consider the estimates, whether they're reasonable to the financial statements as a whole. We did that, and we believe that they are. No significant difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management. We're not aware that management consulted with any other accountants, and our discussions with management were in the normal course of our professional relationship. Some of the financial highlights, the statement of net position for the college, which is on page 10. Your current assets as of August 31st, $34.6 million, which consists of cash, receivables, prepaid. Non-current assets were $88.9 million, which are capital assets, leases receivable, and pension asset. Deferred outflows were $22.3 million. Those were related to pensions and other post-employment benefits. And your current liabilities were $13.8 million, which are accounts payable, accruals, and unearned revenue. Your non-current liabilities were $136.2 million, which is predominantly compensated absences, leases, and other post-employment benefits. Deferred inflows were $27.5 million, which were pensions, OPEB, leases, and the TAP program. The college's net position was a deficit of $31.7 million. Again, that's primarily the result of having to recognize $10.7 million of other post-employment benefits obligation, which is a very long-term liability. Your statement of activities, your net position for the year decreased by approximately $2.7 million for the year. Your total operating revenues for the year were $20.9 million. Operating expenses for the year were $74.4 million. Non-operating revenue was $47.5 million, and other additions were 3.3, which are predominantly capital contributions. Your government auditing standards report, as I said previously, no material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies at the financial reporting level, as well as no instances of non-compliance. With regard to your uniform guidance report, the total federal expenditures for the year were approximately $14.8 million, which includes COVID, the higher education relief fund of $1.6 million, and student financial aid of $11.6 million. Those were the two major programs that we tested. We had an unmodified opinion on compliance, and we found that you complied with the regulations. But we did have one internal control finding with regard to your compliance with the Graham Leach-Bliley Act, which pertains to data security. This has been discussed with the college. You know, what needs to happen to clear that? And, you know, our role as your auditors as well, each year, we have to follow up on this. So we will look for August 31st, 2024, to see if that was addressed. And that is the extent of my comments, unless there's any questions?
Questions from the board?
I just want to say something I seem to say every year, that is, that what makes us have the deficit, the post-employment benefits, we actually can't pay that down. We're not allowed to. So it just hangs out. There is a huge number, as he said, that's a really long, 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 long-term liability. But GASB, I think, permitted that standard, that rule, maybe eight years ago, 10 years ago, somewhere through there, because they wanted a better picture of what the true liabilities for a college would be. But you can't even pay it off. There's nothing we can do to sort of stop it.
Exactly. You can't. It's, the entire liability is recognized, but there's no assets at all set aside, so it would be similar of having an unfunded pension, right? Which the pensions are not unfunded, but that's what the OPEB is.
So I say it because it scares people a lot of times, including past presidents, as Peter nods, and current presidents. At any rate, it doesn't mean that we're in a bad financial position. It's what I want to make sure everyone is understanding. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Chairman?
All right, and we have a second presentation also tonight. Adam Rathbone is going to take us through the 2425 preliminary budget.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight's presentation should be fairly quick. The first, the past two Board of Trustees meetings we've had, discussions on revenue projections. Last month was expense projections. This is kind of tying them both together. And then in the next several weeks, well, I'll be putting together a more formal presentation of the budget for final Board of Trustees approval. So this is kind of just an overview of where we're at today. Before I get into that, though, I do want to state that we did get, although the governor hasn't officially signed off on the budget yet, we did get word that it is just on her desk for signature. A few things to point out from that. One is the funding floor for state aid. It was, did remain at the funding floor from this current fiscal year, so there's no add to that yet. There wasn't $8 million add for operating services and expenses, and that is to be spread across all of the community colleges. What we don't know yet is how that is going to be distributed. We did receive word that it is going to be a permanent add to the budget, to the state aid funding for the community colleges. But again, we just don't know how it's going to be distributed. The distribution is going to be left up to the Director of Budgets for the state in coordination, and then final approval for the SUNY Board of Trustees. So it's, not really sure how that's going to play out. We could get a small portion, we could get nothing. It really is kind of unknown. What the acting CFO, Josh Seager, did tell us, though, is that we are not to budget for this in our current projections for next year, because we don't know what we're going to get. And he said it would be, you know, not right for us to do that, because it's unknown at this point. So we did not include that portion in here at any much. The third thing, the second thing, the food insecurity program, or housing, it's labeled as food insecurity. Initially, that was cut from our funding for the, as a grant for our community college. But due to some really good advocacy up at Albany, not only did the $150,000 get reinstated, it was increased by another $150,000. So we now have $300,000 next year for the insecurity program. So that is, that is a good win. And then lastly, all the capital projects that were submitted were approved, and so we will be eventually moving forward on those. We have a bunch of other RFPs out for other projects on the table right now, but those projects did get approved, and we will be eventually moving forward on those as well. So on to the budget proposal. So right now, we are currently looking at, from the revenue standpoint, an overall increase of about 5.8%, or that's almost $3.5 million more than what this current-year projection is. And again, that's primarily through revenue projections. The revenue projections through tuition are based on a 3% increase in enrollment over this current fiscal year actuals, not based on the budget. So if you look at budget to budget, it's going to be a much bigger increase, but we're budgeting this year based on actuals for this year to next year. On the expense side, we're looking at an increase of about 3.4% or $2.2 million. So we do have a fiscal year where our revenue projections are slated to increase more than our expenses, which is a good sign. The reliance on fund balance for this year will be about $3.6 million. That is almost a 26% decrease in fund balance reliance from one fiscal year to the next. So if you think about this current fiscal year, where we're, scroll down, Joy, sorry. If we're, you know, we're looking at almost a $5 million deficit on the budget standpoint this year to go to the next fiscal year at about 3.6, that 26% decrease in reliance on fund balance is a pretty good improvement going from one year to next. So I think we're on the right track to eventually get to a balanced budget. We all know it wasn't going to get there in one year with that deficit we had, but I think we're making the right, moving in the right direction, both from tuition side with enrollment growth, but then also taking a really hard look at the expenses. The one thing we did do, which I did cover last month, was looking at vacant positions. And this is going to be an ongoing process for us, but when we really look at those vacant positions to make sure that they are mission-critical, so they meet the mission of the college, and if they do, we're going to, you know, agree as a team to backfill them. But if they don't necessarily fit that mission or the needs of the college, we'll look at realigning those funds either to a new position or just vacating that position entirely and have savings from that. This current fiscal year where we did that, we're looking at about $175,000 in savings from positions we decided not to backfill. And that's just the salary with the benefits. It's another $70,000 or so. So that's a significant savings in one year when you were looking at vacant positions. I'll leave it at that. Is there any questions?
I have a comment. I want to praise you and your team, because what you heard, the sort of red pencil is the result of, your red pencils looking at everything. Adam and his team went through all the contracts we have, tried to shave, look at, are we still getting the same services, looking at the open positions. In other words, this has been a fundamental change for us to actually go through and look at a very detailed basis. I just want to say, on behalf of the trustees, I appreciate it, Adam. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you.
And by the way, these are being presented to leadership. Thank you, Steve. We've done so far meetings with just the revenue side, then with just the expense side, and I believe we're doing the next one with, we'll have another one with Sue Serrino, our kind of executive, and then we go back to the legislature leadership. But Steve has been at all the meetings with us, so thank you for your advocacy and patience as well.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to keep the communications open and not show up at the legislature once a year and say, here's our budget, you know? So it gives them additional information, leadership for them to share, you know, amongst their members.
It's a big, huge help, I promise you. So, and this way also, all of Sue's staff, Jessica, Rachel, they're all asking questions early and have a chance to kind of build in that knowledge as they're doing their own budget as well. So at any rate, thanks to everybody. We have an educational presentation tonight. VP Rogers and Schnagl-Murk?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. We're here to talk about institutional effectiveness, everyone's most favorite and exciting topic. But it is an exciting topic, because we're going to be talking a bit about what that means and how DCC does a pretty good job at using data in all of our decision-making processes. So when we say institutional effectiveness, what do we mean? We mean how well we're achieving the mission and the vision and the strategic plan. And I know we spent a lot of time on the strategic plan last year, so that is, in a nutshell, what we're talking about here. One thing that I want to note is we're going to be providing examples in this presentation, but those examples are not exhaustive. And so what that means is anytime a decision comes before you as board members, right? You should continue, as I know you have, to ask the question, what's the data behind So there's some different ways that we and all institutions can use data. One is to describe past results. For example, we can see, right, demographic A outperformed demographic B on their English scores, first semester English scores. We can diagnose why those results may have occurred by looking at additional components of the data. We can try to predict from past results what will happen in the future. We do this all the time with our budget, for example, or with enrollment. And then we can make recommendations for actions in the future. This is that whole piece, right? What is the data to support this decision? And overall, we do, like I said, I think we do a very good job of all of this. So I want to take a moment and just introduce you or reintroduce you to a committee that we refer to on campus as IECC. This is the Institutional Effectiveness and Compliance Committee. During our Middle States reaccreditation cycle, this was primarily the steering committee that helped lead that effort. Many of those same folks are still involved as we continue to plan our ongoing institutional assessment. And these folks are working on an institutional effectiveness planning process. We call it the Plan for Institutional Effectiveness. And basically, it follows the cycle that you see here on the screen, where we are planning, we're implementing the plan, we're assessing what happened, and then we're reflecting so that we can re-enter the planning cycle, making any tweaks, adjustments as needed. And sometimes those tweaks and adjustments are big. It's, hey, this didn't work. We prototyped this, and it was not a good idea for DCC. And sometimes it's, wow, this is going so great, we need to actually make the case for more resources behind it, so, you know, we can continue to be even more effective in this area. I'm going to pass it off to Scott now for a moment. He's going to talk a little bit more about some of the examples that we have.
Yeah, specifically, I want to talk briefly about some of the instruments and tools that we use, and then we'll talk about a couple of them in a little more detail later. The first one is ADASTRA, which is a program that we use to optimize the schedule. Susan will show you later that the great degree that that has really helped us, saved us a lot of money, while also making things better for students. Edsites is a texting chatbot that we use as a promotion of student engagement. They can ask it questions, but we also ask the students questions, and based on their responses, can refer them to particular offices. And I'll talk in some more detail about that later as well. Hilio Campus is the program that we're going to use to do some of the assessment that IECC will be doing. It'll be assessing each individual office, it'll be assessing the college goals. If you may remember, part of our Middle States report said we needed to do a better job of assessing administrative offices, and that's, this is the program we're going to use to help us do that. We're just now in the process of implementation for that. CSE, or CCSSC, is the Community College Survey of Student Engagement. That's something we try to do every three years to see how our students are feeling about the courses they're taking, and also about things like food and other aspects of engagement on campus. So we can see what our trends are, and we can also compare ourselves against other colleges. Great Colleges to Work For is an employee survey that you probably all saw a couple of years ago that we did very poorly on. We're doing that again this spring. We've already done it. We expect to see the results in June. We'll see then whether we've had any improvement since then. Lightcast is something where if you look at our website and look at any program, you'll see predictions for what students can make if they get the job that that program is leading them towards. And Handshake is a place where students can explore career options and find jobs and just interact with employers. Okay, next one. Okay, so areas where we use the data, obviously, we use it in enrollment and budget projections. We use it in student success, looking at course success rates. We use it in terms of student engagement, student learning, which is not just the core success, but also particular things that they're supposed to learn while they are here. We use it in course scheduling, and we use it in staffing. Okay, and more. So a particular example is enrollment data, which is, as you know, is part of our wildly important goal to get up to 5,000 students in the next five years. We came a long way this year, but we still have quite a ways to go. So the assessment that happens with that, so there's smaller level assessments, there are different outreach, so social media outreach, AdWords campaigns, we assess each one of those to see whether it's working for us. If it's working, we may do more with it. If it's not working, we cut it back. An example of something that's working could be the cannabis program, it could be DSP. Something that didn't work was business. We tried to reach business, but the cost of getting business ads in front of people is so high, it was an inefficient one, so we've stopped doing that. We also do environmental scanning, looking at trends, both within SUNY and within the county. This is where it gets a little scarier for us. This population trends in the county is going to be another 10% decline in the next decade in students graduating from high school. It's pretty close to true across the state, except perhaps in the city. And within that, and then we look at the SUNY trends, we see that the four-year schools, many of them are basically becoming open enrollment like a community college is. They're stealing students from the community colleges, and so we are in a much tougher competitive situation. So if we don't change what we're doing, if we kept going for the same source of students we're doing, not doing better advertising, we're in a slow slope, perhaps to irrelevancy. We saw another private school in New York close today, or yesterday. There are five or six Sunnis that are in pretty severe financial shape, so it's really important that we see these trends and know that we have to do something different to combat them. Another thing we did is changing the academic calendar. Two years ago, there was a COVID spike in January, and because of that, we had to push the semester back a week. Pushing the semester back a week actually added a couple hundred thousand dollars of enrollment. So since that time, we've several times moved the calendar, so we're starting later in the spring. It's just something, students don't have a lot of time in January, they wait till the last minute, so starting a week later makes a big difference. Building class schedules, Susan will talk more about that. And of course, obviously, enrollment feeds into budgeting and finance decisions. We also look at student success. A KPI that's part of the strategic plan is to have a 40% success rate where a student completes the credential they start out looking for. Right now, it's about 30%, and most of it's associate degree. With the addition of micro credentials, we expect to get that up to 40% by 2028, if not sooner. Some of the bigger micro credentials that we're starting with are having success rates well north of 50%, so I think we're well on our way to meeting that goal. Transfer rates is also important. About 20% of our students come in, and they do not graduate from DCC, but they go on to a four-year college before they do. So we want to keep that, when we're talking about success, we have to consider that, too. We also use in program evaluation and making modifications to programs based on the data, and assessing supports like advising and tutoring, where we see that students who actually do engage in those things do a whole lot better. Not just from the self-selection process, we do a lot of controls to see that that really does make a difference. Also, decisions like what do we want to do in terms of first-year experience, multiple measures placement. Prior to COVID, we had made many changes based on multiple measures placement. They resulted in huge gains in success in math and in English. Post-COVID, we've lost some of those. We need to look at that more closely to see how we might improve going forward. Student engagement, I want to talk, Handshake is the one where students engage with employers. I want to talk about Edsites, the texting chatbot. As I said, engages via text, it started this fall, and it tells us what are the risk factors and barriers that students are facing, and we hope to see whether it impacts retention. 61% of our students actually do engage with the platform, only 3% have opted out, which we thought would be far more opting out, but they do use it. The risk drivers we're finding are mostly financial, some in terms of engagement, and then academic and wellness, which doesn't mean everyone's doing well academically, but their academics can be influenced by the finances and their engagement at the college as well. But retention, when we get the data from the students, we actually have, someone in my office looks at it every day, and refers to students to different offices, can be to the counseling office, to advisors, to tutoring. So it's a way to reach the students quickly and get them right to the supports they need as quickly as possible. But retention is not just about the supports that students have, but it's also about what's going on in our gateway classes. Right now, the gateway math and English classes, our pass rates are probably 7% or 8% lower than they were pre-COVID, and so that's something we need to look at. And I'm going to hand it off to Susan to talk about academic assessments.
We've all been given some testimonials, and that Edsites is very popular with students, as it turns out, which is great. Just want to throw that out there.
So some of those academic assessment cycles that we engage in on a regular basis, ISLOs are institutional student learning outcomes. These are learning outcomes that every degree program has to hit. So if you get an associate's degree here, you have been exposed to, and hopefully, math competencies of these ISLOs. We also do program reviews. The program reviews are the majors, and every program is on a cycle of a six-year assessment. So what that means, it's usually a full, year-long process where the faculty are very engaged. This is typically led by the program chair, who's a faculty member leading that particular degree program. They use data from, in collaboration with institutional research. They review all the courses, they compare student outcomes, they look at, if it's a transfer program, how students are in, you know, their transfer institutions. If it's a current technical program, they look at things like job placement. And this whole year-long process culminates with a site visit, usually by a team of three. We call them educated peers. So again, if it's a transfer program, those might be from some of our common transfer institutions. If it's a current technical program, that might lean more heavily towards folks that are actually in the industry, receiving our students as new employees. So that's a very robust process, and from that process, we find out if we need to make adjustments to the program to keep current or to better serve our students. We also are looking at our courses. We have our course assessment process that happens on a three-year cycle. Every course is looked at on a three-year cycle or sooner, if there's some indication that it needs to be looked at sooner. And then modifications go through our shared governance curricular processes. And then finally, we have our course evaluations, course success rates. So this is an important data point. This is when the students fill out those questionnaires at the end of every course, right? Talking about the different things that they found helpful or not helpful. And this is a two-tiered process, so we can see the numerical ratings on the standard form that the students fill out. And then the department chairs have access to the actual open-ended comments that students produce on those, and if there's anything, you know, good or bad that needs to be addressed, the department chairs address that with their folks. the department chairs address that with their folks. So I want to take a minute to just give one of these examples that we mentioned earlier and talk about AdAstra. AdAstra is the software that we're using to help us with our course scheduling. And this has been a really great, successful use of data on our campus. We started using AdAstra in the scheduling office in 2016. And how we started is that we just had too many sections of classes scheduled. So financially, the impact here is that when you have too many courses, you have a bunch of low-enrolled courses. You have to make a lot of decisions about canceling courses, which disrupts student schedules right at the last minute before the semester starts. It disrupts faculty schedules right at the last minute before the semester starts. And you lose money if you're running low-enrolled classes that you don't need to be running. So that's how we started, and then how we are doing. I'm going to talk a little bit about what this graph is. So this is a fall-to-fall-to-fall comparison. We have a fall, 2021 is the red, 22 is the blue, and 23 is the green. And what this graph is showing you is what we call a fill ratio. So it's the amount of filled seats versus empty seats in sections. And then it's over time. So it's primarily in the lead-up to the semester, to day zero, and then a little bit after that because there's now a drop period. So what we know from AdAstra is that kind of an ideal fill rate for our classes is 84%. If we are seeing quite a lot of sections at 84%, that means that we're probably offering enough sections to give options for students who need it on a different schedule and who need the classes to graduate, and that also, we're not at risk of running too many under-enrolled sections. And we are hovering right around that 84% mark at day zero. You'll see, right? That's where that line is. I do want to say, too, that there are other points of data that go into building the schedule. So AdAstra helps us analyze how many students, you know, are expected to be in which semester. It helps us predict what modalities those students are likely to want for their courses, online, or hybrid, synchronous, asynchronous, in-person. And also, if those classes are needed in a particular semester to help students graduate on time. So I don't want to make it sound like we are only ruthlessly going by the numbers. There's definitely a human component here as well, and we are making sure that our students get the courses that they need. But it's been pretty significant, you know, in 2015, right before we started using AdAstra, we were probably at about 29% under-enrolled classes, and most recently, we were more around 4%. So that's a pretty significant Some other types of assessment that we engage in, just real quickly. We do voluntary third-party assessments. It's like the FCC visit that we just engaged in, right? We did that because we wanted to make ourselves better. We do self-assessments, like the BOT self-assessment that you all do at the retreat. We do personnel assessments, which are performance evaluations. We do financial assessments, like the audit that you all heard about today. We do unit assessments, which is what we'll be using Heliocampus for. Project assessments, which might be something like the DSP program, that's kind of a whole new initiative, and we're keeping very close tabs on it. And then, of course, program accreditation. So in addition to our institutional accreditation, we have things like the nursing program that has its own accreditation, ACE on accreditation. And I am going to hand this off to Scott. He's going to talk about, even though we're doing a good job, we can still be better.
Yeah, so the first way we can be better is just to communicate data in more clear ways and to get it out to more people. IECC is working on dissemination as part of their plan for the, Plan for Institutional Effectiveness. As we talked about before, we need to improve on unit assessment, and that is something we're hoping to have Heliocampus help us with. Physical assets, both IT and facilities, are recipients of numerous complaints right now. We need to streamline that process and make the assessment of those processes better. And personnel assessment, review their inconsistencies in the annual review process. There are areas where people aren't doing them, and it also will help us improve talent acquisition and retention. And just finally, here's a statement about what we're hoping to be, which is that we're engaged in data-informed decision-making across all areas of the institution, and we seek continuous improvement through this assessment. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Anyone from the board? There's a lot of material that you just, that you discovered.
I can say that I was here on the board when AdAstra was adopted, and it was a little clunky at first, but it's improved substantially over the years and is now working. This is another way that we've been saving money and controlling our costs better. And if I recall correctly, at first, when we were trying it, there were a few students who went, wait, I don't have a class, and I take it this year to graduate. So that's, I know that kind of data. That's why you said there's a human function in there as well. But overall, I think that this is part of the continuing improvement of the institution, at least from my perspective, sitting up here so long. So appreciate the presentation and what you're doing, as well as the work. No questions from the board? Okay. Well, this is a long workshop tonight. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is liaison report. Trustee Costello from the foundation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. The Dutch Community College Foundation held their annual gala on April the 6th, which redeemed a success with 320 attendees and $193,609 of gross income, and another $54,496 in auction items, netting $81,453. On April the 18th, the Handel Foundation Greenspan Trust endowed Chair in Holocaust and Genocide Studies, presented by the Helmut Wozler Smith, was very well attended and received. Diane is currently working with donors regarding six new scholarships. At this moment, it looks like there will be three that will be endowed for a total of $72,000, and the other three are still in exploration. The foundation has hired a Director of Development and Coordinator of Annual Giving and Communication. Some of the upcoming events, one of which is in your packet, and that is the foundation golf tournament at McCann. Brochure is the screen brochure here. Make sure you register for the dinner if you don't golf. The honor, that's the 20th, I should say, of May. On the 15th, going backwards, honors convocation at the Grand View at 11:45 a.m. And then on the 23rd is the foundation board meeting. That concludes our report.
Any questions for Frank? Thank you. I'll present the DCC Association summary. But first, I also want to point out, because I was asked a question by trustee Chincon, if we added any more student representatives. We did, and I'll explain that. But I also want to use this occasion to say we, there's been an election, and we have, I believe, our new student trustee here tonight, Bobby Biersak. Do you want to stand up and say hello? And welcome. Welcome. Thanks for running. Bobby's taking this seriously, so he's already here monitoring what we do and learning how to do it in advance, which is great.
We're here.
Well, you have, you have some big shoes to fill, I promise you. So the association, we met on April 22nd, this is last Monday, and the first thing we did was we appointed Ryan Kane to the Board of Directors, who was replacing the departing Vice President of SGA. She stepped down. We also, at Ryan Scott's request, and Mr. Kane is the second student rep on the Association Board, we had two. Ryan is the treasurer of SGA, and he requested that we amend the DCCA rules or bylaws to allow two additional student representatives. It passed not unanimously. We had one nay vote, and that was Vice President Rathman. But there's a reason why for that.
I got called out.
Oh, come on. It was public. And I was sympathetic, but I think I made the motion to do this. But the reason why is because our students said, look, there's, you cover other areas in the association. You handle athletics, you handle the dorm. Neither one of us are athletes, neither one of us who are on this live at the dorm. So that's why we voted it the way we did. And I know Gara was also very much in favor of this, because it also, we think it helps the educational experience for the students themselves. The ability to do what you've done this year, go to Washington, all of it, it enriches your, your success rate, I think, or your experience as well. It's going to increase your success. And in this instance, it seems as though there was some logic behind having the other two individuals there. Adam's concern, basically, that he shared with all of us was, the number of directors on this thing is getting to be huge. So I suggested to him at the time that, right now, there are two representatives from the Board of Trustees. We could reduce that to one, just like we have one for the foundation. So that could be, and there are other probably areas we could cut as well. So we'll be looking at that. But I'm excited, the fact that we'll have four students now instead of just two. We also reviewed and accepted the audit report, Diamond Audio, for the prior fiscal year, and we also received an unqualified report, again, to the association. We also unanimously supported a resolution for our daycare center to be the official center for a new grant-funded expansion of the City of Poughkeepsie School District's pre-K program. We're hoping this will work out. They're going to be working with the City of Poughkeepsie, but this is a great thing for both the City of Poughkeepsie School District as well as us. We also reviewed the financial report as of March 31st, 2024, and my notes, the summary was basically, one, total revenue and support for the nine-month period exceeded the budgeted amount, which is always great. Expenses for general administrative expenses were lower than the budgeted amount. Expenses for salaries and wages were lower than what we budgeted. Student activity fees exceeded the budgeted amount. And while expenses for athletics exceeded what was budgeted, there's a surplus in the budget for the nine-month period. Also, occupancy rates for the residents fall in the fall, were below what we anticipated, but not by much, about three beds. But occupancy for the spring exceeded our expectations, basically owing to the Culinary Institute taking rooms longer than we expected, so both in January and February. So overall, at this point in time, we're looking good for the association as well. Anybody have any questions? Thanks. I try to, our meetings now are really comprehensive. I want to also here thank all the members, all the staff who come to report to us, as Derek can say, our sports director, everybody, they come up with much more comprehensive things than we used to. They're six pages long, and they summarize this for us. But we used to, I've been on the, the association board since I was appointed as a trustee, and we used to have much less information given to us. So this is great, because I think when we read it in advance, it helps us ask pertinent questions, or just say, attaboy.
And we feel really in touch with the campus. It's the only way. It's really vital.
That's what I said. Honestly, that's the only reason I'll be voting for the other students, is because it's an opportunity for the students to come and talk to us as well. But I do agree, Adam, we need to trim elsewhere, because there's just a little too many. So if there's no other business for the workshop, then let's move right over to calling the regular meeting to order at 7:14, I believe. Who would like to, who would like to say the pledge of allegiance tonight for us? Gara? Can I count on you? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Ms. Punachilla, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank Costello?
Present.
Mr. Stephen Caswell?
Present.
Ms. Maya Chincon?
Present.
Ms. Derek Lao?
Here.
Mr. Michael Dupree?
Here.
Ms. Angela Flesland?
Present.
Ms. Lisa Garni?
Present.
Mr. Evis Guzman?
Present.
Ms. Evelyn Panici?
Present.
Ms. Linda Pratt?
Present.
Quorum, present.
Thank you. Make it a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Thank you. There's no one signed up for public comment tonight, I believe, Joya. However, just for the record, and these will both be put into the minutes, we received a letter of support for the proposed new policy to lower the minimum age to become a student here at the college, from Dr. Dwight Bonk, who's the superintendent of Wapinjor's Central School District. And we also received one, I just saw it tonight, because it went to Peter rather than the Board of Trustees email that we all have, but from Dr. Eric Rosser, who's the superintendent of the Poughkeepsie City School District, also talking about the many advantages the program would bring. So those are considered public comment. As I said, they'll be put into the minutes and posted on our website. Next item on the agenda, we consideration of the minutes for our last meeting on March 26th. Everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, any names or extensions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is committee reports, academic and student affairs, we present tonight by trustee Cloud.
It was a pretty lively meeting, and we had the same presentation of the institutional effectiveness and culture of evidence from Susan Rogers and Scott Schnackenberg. We discussed the board action plan and felt that we needed not to make any changes. And then we had numerous informational updates. The committee discussed department chair appointments and the status of that process. We reviewed feedback provided by the chairs of the PSO and the PSA from the March 13th committee meeting. We discussed the admissions age requirement policy that we just referred to. We discussed the artificial intelligence integration and implementation policy, and tabled some of that discussion. It's really dense, and it was kind of shocking. So, and then upcoming events, Dr. Jordan spoke to the committee about dates for all the ceremonies and events taking place at the end of the semester.
Any questions for Gara? There being none. I think I'm supposed to, before I go on, I was supposed to, as always, say that all resolutions and potential actions are discussed in the committee meetings when they're held, but I think you can hear that from the summaries that we, that are provided now. Next item is committee, the board policy. Chair Guzman?
The policy committee met Wednesday, April 10th. We had some items for consideration of the main, the first one, admission age requirement policy. The committee reviewed this policy. Updates were suggested by members of Pelt. The committee agreed that they would move forward withholding a public hearing on this policy during tonight's meeting, and then bring the policy forward at the May board meeting. The second item was the artificial intelligence integration and implementation policy. The committee reviewed a very dense document. We agreed to table it for more discussion and hopefully, possibly, a resolution for the following month. We also went over the board action plan and agreed that no changes were needed to be made to the document at that time. The board action plan will be brought forward at tonight's meeting. We also did go over some of the upcoming events and ceremonies, same to our other committee.
Thank you. Any questions for Evis?
And we can move forward for, at this point, I bring forward Resolution 2024-26.
We first, we first have to open a public hearing, I believe, right?
That's what the, that's what the.
Oh, that's what that does, sorry.
So, yeah.
My motion usually.
Via resolution, sorry about that. I offer the following resolution and move to its adoption. Be it resolved that, as recommended by the president of the college, the board of trustees opens a public hearing to review a proposed admissions age requirement policy.
I'll second. If you get a vote. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that. You did that part.
I was missing, missing.
Forgive me. So at this point, the, what?
No, no.
So at this point, we have opened to the public hearing. And do we have a speaker?
Stand up, identify yourself, please. Even though we know you, it's for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Sunday, Associate Vice President for enrollment success.
If you would like to take the podium, please.
You can do it there, too.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Brian Sunday, Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Success here at Duchess Community College. I'm here tonight to speak in regards to the policy regarding the age and admission requirement. Before I do so, I want to thank the board and the president for the opportunity to do this and to discuss this policy. Open communication, conversation is important to any significant addition or transition in enrollment requirements. So I thank you for that. I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Jordan, our executive leadership team, Scott in particular, for the warm welcome to this community, for myself. It's been a transition where we've been able to hit the ground running and to be able to have open and meaningful conversation about ways to advance our enrollment. With that said, I want to speak specifically to the age requirement proposal. Much of my research was derived from the very respected Community College Research Center. In terms of enrollment in community colleges, we consider many areas, areas of opportunity and areas of growth. There is one area that vastly outpaced There is one area that vastly outpaced those areas that you may think of in terms of where enrollment is coming from for community colleges. Many speak about opportunities to engage adult learners. Everyone is always talking about the traditionally aged student. In the past academic year, dual enrollment programming vastly outpaced those two areas in enrollment. Expanding the age requirement for Duchess Community College to consider K-12 dual enrollment policies and partnerships reflects the new national model that is more pathway-oriented. Quoting directly from the Community College Research Center, "These types of equitable pathways are designed from a research-based framework for rethinking dual enrollment as a more equitable on-ramp to college programs of study." Really, in my words, to simplify that, by changing our age requirement, we are creating an opportunity to engage students who never viewed themselves as college material at critical ages, and we are hearing that from our partners, as illustrated by letters of support from Dr. Rosser and Dr. Bonk. Continuing just very briefly on the Community College Research Center approach, expanding the age requirement range allows for us to reach underserved families and students. It creates college awareness through offerings. It better aligns pathways for students to actually have meaningful credits created. It allows students to gain confidence as college-ready learners. We have competitors in the community college landscape that are currently doing this right now. There are community colleges in our geographic area that have embedded first-year seminar, a college preparation class, as early as ninth grade in school districts, allowing students that are most at risk of not going to college to achieve college credits. To that end, Duchess Community College is currently engaged in no less than three such partnerships, two of which are signed contracted grants with our partner districts. The first being the Smart Scholars Grant with Poughkeepsie, which is slated to begin this fall, which engages students in their freshman year with earning college credits. The second being the P-Tech Program through Duchess Bosse's, which is scheduled to also begin this September. The third is a negotiation with partner districts that is currently ongoing, which includes both Poughkeepsie and Wappingers, to embed our own first-year seminar into their programming, which improves access and gateways for students that need us most. There's another population that would be distinctly impacted by this increase in the age range, and that is our homeschool population. This is a significant market in terms of our research that we are currently missing on by not allowing younger homeschooled students to enroll in our courses. If a student is going to be homeschooled in high school, that means they're doing that at the age of 13 or 14, not 16 or 17. Using comparisons, Genesee Community College, who allows the younger students to enroll, has over 300 students in that age range every single year, the vast majority of whom come from different counties other than Genesee. This is inclusive of Duchess. They also charge out-of-county students a much higher rate to be there. So we actually are impacting families within our local communities by giving them the lack of access here, forcing them to go out into different areas of the state to find this option, so they're paying the double tuition rate in order to do that at some times. We have an opportunity with the 24 credit program as a pathway for these students, so where the students could actually go aside from the necessary high school diploma or superintendent letter to pursue our dual, our 24 credit dual enrollment program as a student that's not enrolled at a current high school district. All three of our chancellor's awards winners this year were homeschooled students who enrolled at DCC at an age younger than 18. And really, in terms of all of our research, student learning types have definitely evolved as a result of the pandemic. There's a homeschool boom. There are different learning modalities that need to come up for consideration. If we want to effectively recruit, enroll, and serve these different types of student learners, we have to consider the opportunity to increase the age range with where we engage them and entertain them and what they want to learn and how they want to pursue higher education. We wanted to present some data. You just learned from our institutional effectiveness side how important it is in terms of us using data to make decisions. Currently at DCC, so here locally, the pass rate of 16- and 17-year-olds that are enrolled in our classes is 82%. Students outside of that 16- and 17-year-old age range going higher, the pass rate is currently 67%. The rate of A's, so our outstanding achievement, 16- and 17-year-old students, 49%. Students above that age range, 32%. Looking at a model outside of our district, 14- and 15-year-olds enrolled at a competitor college, pass rate 86%. Above that age range, pass rate 65%. Rate of A's, 57% for the 14- and 15-year-olds, 34% for the standard regular population. We understand concerns that will these students be able to be served? Will they be able to be effectively brought through the process, supported through the whole process? To that, we have a couple of thoughts that we want to present for consideration for everyone here tonight. First and foremost, families and the students themselves have a responsibility to assess their desires in terms of education, to assess whether or not they're college-ready. It is our responsibility as an institution to provide them with those opportunities for those pathways. We have an enrollment and student success team that is at the ready and is responsible to adopt and adapt to changing times in enrollment. We've just heard tonight about how we could become a non-entity. We view this as a significant opportunity to address a trend that is not going away in higher education, wherein we have a population that is vastly increasing as opposed to our other population pipelines, and is an opportunity for us to service that population where we need to, where they want to be met, and we'd like to strongly advocate for the consideration of the adaptation of changing the age policy to include the younger age ranges. I want to thank you for your time, and I open for any questions.
It's more of a statement, and I'm not going to, like Michael, call out the person in the room, but I was having a conversation with someone in this room recently, and they said that their own child had to enroll in another community college because they were not old enough to enroll here. So when we're losing our own, I think it speaks volumes to how many people in the community we're losing here. I personally started taking courses at 16 years old. I did well in them. Could I have taken them younger? Absolutely. This is not for every student, and I think that's really the key. This is for those students and their families that decide this is the path that they're going in. So I don't want everyone to fear that, you know, we're opening the college up to middle schoolers, because that's not reality. This is a very specific set of students, and giving them those resources so they don't have to go out of county, because it broke my heart and broke me financially when I heard that someone here had to make that decision to go somewhere else for their child. So this is, I think, a great, great move for the college, and I think that as we look to increase enrollment, this is that group. It's these homeschool students. A girlfriend of mine, her son is 14. He is very bright. There is no doubt that he could take courses here. I mean, we look at our graduation last year, and we had a student, a high school student, who graduated with our associates. There's a lot of students like that in these, in this community. We have a lot of really, really bright kids, and we need to give them every opportunity they can so that they can walk into college with 60 credits. Because what an amazing financial gain that is. I mean, we look at student debt, we look at all of these hot topics. Here's your two years that you don't have to worry about. So I am 110% behind this and love to see it.
I would have to say something that I'm completely for this because, like, I have a 14-year-old sister. She's already talking about college and like, oh, what she's going to do, taking AP classes and all this, even next year. She'll be 15, and she wants to do all these things to prep for herself, and I wish I had the opportunity when I was 14, so I'm all for this.
You know, I always, also see it as a way to get rid of the onus on community college as, well, you couldn't get into so-and-so, so you have to go to the community college. And I hear that from certain echelons of people, and I, since I've been here, realized what a jewel this is, and would really love for that to go away and to start earlier and show people in Duchess County what an opportunity this is for their kids. Early is great.
And do you have another speaker?
Yeah.
Anything further for our current speaker? No? We do have another request? Please, if you could take the podium.
Good evening. My name is Laura Murphy. Dr. Laura Murphy and I'm here to comment on the proposed policy from several perspectives as a teacher of history here at Duchess, as an advocate for sound governance, shared governance practice, and as a union representative. I'm currently the president of Duchess United Educators. I'm also a professor of history, finishing my 20th year at Duchess. And in addition, I'm the outgoing alternate delegate to the Faculty Council of Community Colleges, FCC, finishing six years in that position. So first, as a teacher of history, I believe, based on my experience and witnessing the impact of studying history on students, that studying history in a forthright, open way is liberating, empowering, builds compassion and solidarity among people of diverse backgrounds, and provides the basis for hope that we can create a better world. So I believe the more people who have the opportunity to do that, the better off we will be. However, I believe the policy as written needs significant revision in order to ensure that it does not result in harmful constraints on the free and open discussion of difficult historical questions and challenging topics in all disciplines. For example, the policy states that, quote, "Parents/guardians may request an opportunity to review course outlines and texts by contacting the vice president for enrollment and student success," and, quote, "Parents should not expect the same access to instructors that they might in a secondary school." I believe additional language is needed about what this access to texts and faculty would be, rooted in clear, robust statements about what academic freedom means for faculty and students in college courses. For example, faculty may assign supplementary texts in response to a discussion that takes place in class one day, so parents will not be able to review all texts in advance. Also, given the efforts by people in positions of power in many parts of this country to limit and thus distort how history is taught, I'm concerned about how this policy could be misused to further those aims. So I really believe we need to have robust language in there to protect academic freedom. Regarding sound governance, I believe this policy would be much more effective if it had gone through the PSO, where academic decisions are supposed to be made at DCC. Academic policy should come up through governance, not down from the board, and this proposal is very different than the one that was voted down by the Committee on Student Learning and Assessment. The new version, in my view, should have been brought back to CSLA in response to the vote and feedback that committee provided. Bringing this proposal back to CSLA would have provided an opportunity to create a more effective policy which would better serve students and the community. And to go around the governance process in this way, while I'm sure it was with the best of intentions, sends a message that our governance system is a performance and that the college will ignore academic recommendations when they're not what's wanted and that our professional judgment is not valued. This public hearing is certainly better than nothing at all, but the only announcement of it came two business days in advance, in a mention at a PSO meeting on Friday. In addition, holding this hearing on short notice at the end of the semester when we're working tirelessly to support our students to finish their coursework makes it very difficult for colleagues to take the time to prepare remarks and speak to you here tonight. And so the timing sends the message that teaching and learning at DCC are not recognized as top priorities. Finally, from a union perspective, whatever the policy turns out to be, the college will have the legal responsibility to bargain with DU over the impact of the policy on the working conditions of DU-eligible faculty and staff. For example, we have an academic freedom article in our collective bargain agreements, and faculty are not currently required to provide course materials in advance for parental review. I have no doubt that everyone involved in bringing this proposal forward wants the best for DCC students and our community. Drawing on the professional expertise of people who do the work of educating DCC students is necessary in order to better accomplish the policy's goals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay.
No, we have one more.
We have two more.
Two more, sorry.
My name is Melanie Klein, and I'm a professor of English and Humanities. I've taught first-year composition courses for 19 years here, along with other creative writing and literature courses, and I'd like to make two points about the proposed policy. The first is that, over the years, I've taught a number of bridge students and other young students under the current early admissions program, and many of these were well-prepared to discuss and engage with difficult subject matter. However, others, some of whom have let me know that they were homeschooled, have been quite sheltered from the unfamiliar, and they have been far less prepared to consider thorny subjects. I'm concerned about students two or more years younger than these participating in discussions of adult matters which occur frequently in literary texts and which arise at unpredictable moments in every creative writing course in a class of adults. There is usually a significant difference between a person with 16 or 17 years of experience in the world and a person with only 14 or even 13 years. The disparity between a very young student and the rest of the class could further complicate already difficult discussions. That disparity could also have a stifling effect on the older student's willingness to risk articulating their thoughts, whether aloud or in writing, or on the instructor's willingness to use material that they would otherwise have used. The second concern I'd like to raise has to do with letter D in the policy guidelines, which, as Dr. Murphy mentioned, states that it is the responsibility of the parent/guardian to request and review course outlines and texts before consenting to student enrollment. I am one of a number of faculty in multiple disciplines who frequently use in class very new articles and essays drawn from current publications. I am always looking for writing that seeks to make real change in the world, or that is inventive, or urgent, or fascinating in some way. These pieces are good models for my composition students to read, consider, discuss, and respond to in writing. Other instructors use current topical material in their courses in government, history, statistics, economics, behavioral sciences, biology, business, and other disciplines. We do this to engage students, to help them make connections between the past and the present, and to show them that what they are studying is relevant to the real world. In practice, this means that I do not know all, or even much, of the texts and materials that I will be using in class before my students enroll. In the case of a creative writing course, I know even less, since many of the texts we will work with will be written by the students in the course. If I were asked to supply a parent with a list of every text their child would encounter in my course ahead of time, I would be unable to comply. For me and for many other instructors, guideline D in the proposed policy is simply not workable. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. I now recognize the hand in the back.
My name is Michael Adams. I am here as the PSO chair and representing CSLA. I was asked by my colleagues, Kevin Kavanaugh and Lindsay Guile, the chair and vice chair of CSLA, to present this information to you. As Dr. Murphy spoke on this issue, well, we have two concerns with this policy. The first is the overlooking of the governance process, and I have a timeline as shared by CSLA. After Scott Snackenberg raised the possibility of lowering the age for registration to the four, to age 14 at the March 2023 meeting, members brought back this idea to the academic departments for discussion and a vote. At the April 2023 meeting, a vote was held with these results. Six departments voted against it, one for it, and there were four abstentions. Therefore, the policy was voted down in committee. At the September 2023 meeting, Scott brought this change in policy up in open forum, noting that New York State had recently agreed to fund the P-Tech program again, and if DCC were to participate, it would need to allow high school freshmen to enroll. At the October 2023 meeting, Scott argued that he had felt DCC was losing out on potential enrollment opportunities, noting in particular that Genesee Community College had been, or had between 300 to 400 students aged 14 and 15 years old. Members agreed to bring back the idea back to departments. At the November 2023 meeting, Scott answered a few questions, and there was some discussion on the topic, but no vote was recorded. At the January 24 meeting, the topic in these minutes were mentioned in the minutes, but there was no update reported. Those were the words of CSLA, and if I can add, yesterday, at the governance leadership meeting, this was also brought up, and this was spoke, or? this was also brought up and this was spoke or talked about. It isn't the idea necessarily against the policy. It was the way that the policy was being presented to governance. It was introduced to CSLA as a way for them to create it. It was voted down, and then the board adopt or the board suggests a new policy which has not gone through governance. We would ask that this policy is given more time to be reviewed by governance and continued feedback by faculty who are who are seeing students on a regular basis. The second concern, which I think has been addressed somewhat in the policy, but not enough, is about the content and the material of our courses. The one example I can give you, and this is coming from the CSLA chair, what about classes like life drawing, where we use nude models? Are we going to prevent fourteen-year-old students who are not emotionally or cognitively prepared to draw and view a nude model the opportunity to enroll in programs that require this course? The other thing that I would like to mention, that was also mentioned at our leadership meeting, and is, this was coming from PSA, is does this does the introduction of younger students on campus present an even more safety and security risk as well as the additional maturity and classroom dynamics in terms of discussion? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? Be it none, I offer Resolution 2024-37 and move to its adoption. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees closes the public hearing on the proposed admission age requirement policy. Do I have a second?
Saca.
Any nays or abstentions?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye. Then nays or abstentions?
Okay. Any nays or abstentions at this point? Be it none, so moved. For continuing the Policy Committee, I offer Resolution 2024-38. I offer the following resolution and move to its adoption. Whereas the President has developed a board action plan with significant input from various board committees, and whereas all the members of the Board of Trustees have reviewed the aforementioned plan, whereas the Board of Trustees endorses the concepts outlined in the plan, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the following board action plan, which shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting and is hereby approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any nays or abstentions?
The first is all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? So moved. That concludes my committee.
Don't we have the board action plan? Am I wrong? That's what I was, sorry, just heard that, sorry. Yes. Right, thank you. Finance and Facilities is the next committee report. Chair Caswell?
All right, thank you. So we had a couple of presentations. First of all, we met in committee on Monday, April 8, and we had a couple of presentations, the ones that you saw here tonight on the institutional effectiveness. And we also had Adam Rathbun provide the committee with a report on revenue and expenses, again, that you saw earlier tonight. And then there were several items for us to review and consider. We had a, Adam spoke to the committee about five RFPs that are currently in process. In the month of May, awards for these projects will be brought to the board for approval. We did also have the auditors, well, actually Donna Roquep took us through the auditors' report in committee, so we had a detailed discussion there. She walked us through the report, and you saw the brief summary from the auditors tonight, and I'll have a resolution related to that in just a couple of minutes. Scott Snackenberg provided us with an enrollment update for the spring and fall enrollment. So this is a critical factor in our budgeting process. So it's important that we get those updates on a regular basis. And also the board action plan, the committee reviewed the board action plan and agreed no changes to be made. And the board action, you know, was brought forward just a few minutes ago. And then just an informational update. We had a proposal to continue the legal services with the current law firm. There was a slight increase in the hourly costs, and Dr. Jordan gave us an update on, you know, those increase in costs and justifying and supporting those costs. And we did recommend approving that and continuing with that law firm. That is the activity for the month. And with that, I'll go to the one resolution. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. This is Resolution Number 2024-39. Whereas the Duchess Community College Board of Trustees has a responsibility to conduct business according to prudent, professional, and accepted practices, and whereas the financial statements of the Duchess County, Duchess Community College for the fiscal year ending August 31, 2023, was reviewed by the outside accounting firm Bonadillo and Company, LLP, and whereas, in the opinion of the independent auditors, the financial statements of the college conform with generally accepted accounting practices in all respects, and whereas the Board Finance and Facilities Committee has reviewed the audit and recommendations that the Board of Trustees accept the audit for fiscal year 2022, '23, and whereas the members of the Board of Trustees have received copies of the audit for review, now therefore be it resolved that upon, that based upon the recommendation of the Finance and Facilities Committee, the Board of Trustees accepts the independent auditor's report for the fiscal year 2022, '23. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Steve. The next item on the agenda for committee reports is Personnel and Community Relations. Chair Leslie?
Thank you, Personnel and Community Relations. Matt, we did not hear the presentation on institutional effectiveness. I have sort of instituted my own policy that if something's going to be presented at the board meeting, we don't need to have it at the committee meeting as well. Once is enough and kind of respecting everyone's time. So I was happy to hear it this evening. But we had lengthy discussions on Personnel and Community Matters. There is one resolution this evening. It is 2024-40. I offer the following and move its adoption. Whereas Section 35 of the Social Service Law requires the title determination of positions of professional services be made by the Board of Trustees, it has been determined that the Computer Information Security Officer, CISO, title, which was approved on September 19, 2023, as per Resolution 2024-13, needs to be amended to meet the needs of the college, and the correct title for the position is Chief Information Security Officer. Now therefore be it resolved that approval is hereby given to amend the title of Computer Information Security Officer to Chief Information Security Officer. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution adopted.
Thank you, Angela. I wish you would read all the resolutions sometimes. Next item on the agenda is reported to Student Trustee. Trustee Chinko?
Good evening. So I spoke to SGA members about the Chartwell's meeting, about that I was discussing at the last meeting, and unfortunately, Chartwell's does not want to meet with SGA at least all year. They have, for some reason, been very stubborn. This is also including last semester. And then Orientation is occurring again this summer. I'm being an Orientation leader, so that's kind of exciting. Then we have Casino Night that's happening tomorrow night. DCC at Night is also happening this Friday from 4:00 to 2:00 a.m. And then SGA is also having a Fun Night, which is just exclusive to SGA members only. We're going to go to Spins Bowl on May 18. And then Diana Kiernan presented Therapy Dogs on Campus, so that would be starting like next semester. It's just like she's going to bring in like one like dog and to see how it's going to like work out with students for like, I guess, a happy moment to promote like dopamine, I guess, if they're having like stressful times.
Like yoga.
Dr. Condon used to bring in his dogs.
Really?
Yep.
Okay. Well, they're going to start out with one dog, and then they're going to slowly like progress because this might be something students might like. That's it.
I got to see the student production of This is Modern Art. Did anybody else? It was fantastic. It was just, I just wanted to kind of add that to the student info. The theater was all decorated and graffiti, and it was a total experience.
It's the lead story in DCC Connects.
Such talent.
Any other questions for Maya? Comments? Thank you, Maya. We'll take this step, that Chartwell's not meeting with SGA, to see what is involved with that. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is my report. So first, Matthew Murray, the advisor for DCC's Political Science Club and instructor of our National Model UN courses. And Timothy, I hope I'm saying his name correctly, Coaklin, who's the director of Bachelor Colleges International Studies Program. Together, oversaw eleven students from both schools at the 2024 National Model UN Conference. Our students represented the Kingdom of Jordan. They debated, drafted working papers, and passed resolutions on such topics as protecting the rights of children in conflict zones, returning looted cultural artifacts, and promoting sustainable tourism, which just sounds pretty darn great to me if we could actually have leaders who did those same things. Dana Gavin, who's here tonight, the director of the Writing Center, successfully defended her doctoral dissertation at Old Dominion University and will graduate this August. Congratulations, Dana. Linda Bertolozzi organized Ready, Sit, Go to College! To help high school students with individual education plans or needed other accommodative services transition from high schools plus special education into college. This one-of-a-kind event drew rave reviews with one hundred and twenty-eight students and thirty-nine chaperones, i.e. parents or resource professionals, attending. We had these before, but we didn't have them since COVID. This also event is covered in more detail in the latest issue of DCC Connects. On May 16, DCC will host the Second Annual Pre-Graduation Dinner BBQ for graduating students, their families, and friends, along with DCC faculty and staff. Although traditions like this were more common pre-COVID, this is a new event that launched last year with great success. I want to thank Matt Hanlon, our director of student activities, and his team for organizing this celebratory and very student-centered event. This month, Institutional Effectiveness submitted a congressionally-directed spending request in support of a center of excellent concept in behavioral sciences and public service. Framed in support, it expanded provides sustainability to successful flagship programming like the DSP Direct Support Professional Microcultural Series. This request was submitted following very positive feedback from members of Senator Gillibrand's staff. Frank mentioned the 2024 Bridge to the Future Gala and it being a success in terms of the numbers. I also just want to say that it was great to see as many people as we had out there. Three hundred and twenty made for a very filled room, and I thought it was great that DJ Bill Beal got many people out on the dance floor, including me. The SUNY grant-sponsored partnership with Oneonta and DCC has officially commenced. An advisor from Oneonta will visit every other week to our campus to discuss transferring to Oneonta with any students so interested. The advisor will also participate in special events here to deepen and enhance the relationship between the two institutions. Our direct support or DSP students were in a panel discussion centered on, quote-unquote, "education beyond the DSP." This session offered great insights into how the three DSP microculturals we offer now are actually laying a strong foundation for DCC's Human Services degree in case some of the students want to stay here for a longer time period. Moreover, students also learned about how the Bachelor of Social Work opportunities available at DCC's affiliated four-year institutions could work for them. In athletics, the DCC coaching staff is vigorously recruiting for the upcoming 2024-2025 academic year, extending national letters of intent to students eager to commit to participating on an athletic team here at the college. And Caitlin Robin, a member of our women's volleyball team, is now a recipient of the 2023-2024 Chancellor's Award for Student Excellence. And that completes my report. Any questions or comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda is our President's Report. Dr. Jordan?
So the bulk of my report is going to be a report by Scott Snackenberg on enrollment. But while he moves to the podium, I want to let the board and everyone else know that I was invited to join the Board of Trustees for the Anderson Center for Autism, which I gladly accepted.
Congratulations.
Excited about that. Scott?
So for summer enrollment, we right now have about eleven hundred and fifty students and a little over seven thousand credits. Those are increases of sixteen and twenty-four percent, respectively, over last year. At this point in time, about two-thirds of enrollment for summer is typically in sort of well along the way to being substantially above this summer where we were last summer. Major drivers for that, again, the Direct Support Professional Program. We have another small summer cohort started, starting but also students from some of the earlier cohorts enrolling in round two or round three. And we have three aviation maintenance cohorts running simultaneously for the first time. Fall enrollment, just over a thousand students for about eleven thousand five hundred credits. That's an eighteen percent increase in students and a fifteen percent increase in credits than at the equivalent point last year. That's even more significant because enrollment's been open for a week less this year than it was last year, so very quickly, things are starting to fill up. There are a hundred and forty new students registered versus a hundred and fifty-four at this point last year. Again, but new students only been open for two weeks this year versus three last year. We've been gaining a little bit every day, and I expect we'll surpass it soon. Continuing student enrollment is twenty-four percent above where it was last year. It's well above. Application-wise, we're just under twenty-nine hundred, which is a two-point-five percent increase. As I've been saying right along, I think it's a softer application pool. More of the applications are coming from the SUNY application, which means the students are primarily looking for a four-year school first, and with many of them admitting ninety percent plus of the students who are applying there, they're probably going to end up at the four-year school. So we're going to have to really focus on bringing in the yield of those students this year. So to that end, we recently had an Accepted Students Day this, two Saturdays ago now. We had two hundred and eleven students attend with families. Over five hundred and thirty people were here. That was the largest prospective student event on campus since 2011, which was the height of the enrollment boom for community college. That was a really great event. I want to give kudos to Mike Rowe and his staff and all the volunteers who made that a great day. The rocky roll over the new FAFSA continues to be an issue. We are doing everything we can to smooth the process for the students. This past Wednesday, we had the first session for students, continuing students, to help them get their FAFSA's completed. And tomorrow will be the second session, and we will have new student sessions starting in about two weeks for new students to come in and get help getting their form completed. We also have two federally funded experts working for our Financial Aid Office. They're working remotely. These are funds that we got because we're a Hispanic-serving institution. So we talked with a consultant, mainly a financial aid organization. They found two people who are working and already making great progress for us so that everything is smooth for the students and we are able to package properly for them. And finally, housing deposits are up slightly from sixty-five to sixty-eight versus the same time last year. That doesn't seem like much, but for the housing students, the FAFSA is a big deal. And being up a little bit at this point despite the FAFSA problem is really, really a good thing. Any questions?
Thank you, Scott. That's my report.
Thank you. I should add that one of the reasons why I don't have a lot of questions is I get this reports, Peterson's, which you're sending out to him, so I see these things already. I think it's great news that enrollment is doing as well as it is. That's aligned with our budget. We believe it'll be increased next year, so I think all that's very positive. Are there any items for other business? I want to take a quick thing to plug then, because I think I mentioned it up here, but the Regional Chamber had its gala, what, six weeks ago? Very well-attended, very buzzy, very happy, very joyous, and lots of dancing there, too. And I know that I've been with Peter to a couple of the breakfasts. I'm going to make a renewed effort to start going to your breakfast again because I feel like the college should have more presence there as well.
I think Dr. Jordan danced a little there.
Thank you.
I didn't get to stay for the dancing, darn it. I should have been there, I could see.
It was the disco theme.
You mean, it's back in our day, dancing those tunes. Yes, thank you. The next meeting will be May 28, 2024. I did want to point out that this will actually be Maya's last board meeting with us. Boo hoo. No, I said next one, May 28. That will be our last meeting, so make sure you come prepared to say, send her off with her success. And if there's nothing else tonight, then they get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, tonight for joining us, as well as to our crew for publicizing these meetings. Thank you.